Good evening, welcome to the regular council meeting for the city of Madison Heights. The date is April 10th, 2017, the time is 7:30. I call this meeting to order. Can I please have a roll call?
Mayor Protem Bliss.
Here.
Councilman Clark.
Here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
And Mayor Hartwell.
Thank you. Would you please rise if you're able and willing for an invocation to be led by Councilman Robert Corbett and remain standing if you'd like for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Infinite wisdom, we thank you for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today and we ask most humbly for a blessing on our gathering. Right in our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Approval of the agenda, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda at this point? Thank you, we'll move on. We have a presentation tonight, two of them actually, and the first one is to present a special certificate of recognition for Mr. Andrew McGilvery. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. Whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Madison Heights wish to express on behalf of the city their appreciation to Andrew McGilvery in recognition of his outstanding service to the community, and whereas Andrew contributed to the Historical Commission in a number of ways, including facilitating the coordination, assembly, and placement of display pieces for the Heritage Rooms, assisting with the revising of the Heritage Rooms brochure, and being responsible for the installation of the Heritage Room security cameras, and whereas Andrew was instrumental in the coordination of Memorial Day Parade, Madison Heights Pub Crawl, and was a member of the Information Technology Advisory Committee, and whereas Andrew has furthered those ideals that contribute to a better community. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council, being the duly elected representatives of the people of Madison Heights, express the city's appreciation and recognition to this distinguished citizen for his public service on the Historical Commission from May 2010 to March 2017, and the Information Technology Advisory Committee from April 2014 to March of 2017.
Mr. McGilvery, will you please accept this? Mr. McGilvery, would you like to offer any comments just on this presentation and your career with the city? Okay, well, thank you, very good. We have another presentation tonight, and this regards the photo contest awards for our This Is Home photo contest. Mr. Myers, could you give a report on this?
Certainly, and while I get ready, I want to show to the public the winning entries here. We are very pleased to announce the winners of the This Is Home photo contest. We had 31 entries, 22 residential, and nine employees in a resident and employee category. This was an initiative to go out in the community and see what we can come up with, to help us with our website, with our various publications, and we're very pleased with what came back. So, we have three winners in the resident category, and three winners in the employee category. And I don't know who's -- I see two of our employees, I know Rosalind Yermin who won first place can't be here tonight due to the Passover holiday. But let me briefly read the certificates. Each one is a little bit different, but we have one for resident Bob Stouffer, who participated in the contest, and his aerial photograph of Bill Huffman Park was chosen as the first-place winner in the resident category. We have Daniel Giacina, whose photograph of kids at the firehouse was chosen by the judges as the second-place winner in the resident category. And we have Chris Ahern, whose photograph of dogs, and you're seeing all of these right now, was the third-place winner in the resident category. And then on the employee side, as I mentioned earlier, Roz Yermin took first place with her photograph of fall trees. Kirby Rochester, who's here tonight, took second place for his photograph of kids at the park. And Melba Castellic, who's also here tonight, took third place in the employee category for her photograph of kids on the golf cart. So we have certificates for each, and also a check for the prize winner.
Thank you. I know some of the winners are here tonight. Is Mr. Stouffer here tonight? Will you please come up and accept this certificate?
Mr. Mayor, can I just say that he has contributed some beautiful pictures to our historical collection, the ones that I have never seen before.
Great.
Thank you, Bob.
Is Daniel Giacina or Chris -- oh, Daniel, please. Is Chris Ahern here?
Yeah, he looks good, it's been awhile.
Please come up for your certificate, thank you.
Oh, he's so good, great.
Good work, Kirby.
Height of 50, 50.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
And is Roz here? Oh, Kirby Rochester, please, will you come up to accept a certificate?
Very nice.
And will Melba Castellic please come up?
(applause)
Sure, if that's what we're going with, yeah.
Once tomorrow.
Thank you, Kirby.
Congratulations, you got first yard competition.
Thank you.
Any comments from any of the winners, or anyone else on this project, on the photo contest?
Good.
All right. Thank you. Next to any agenda, our public hearings, we do not have any scheduled tonight. Reports on an agenda of interest to parties in the audience. No one's risen to be recognized, so we'll go to a meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for anyone in the public to address any subject at the microphone now. It's helpful, although not required, to give your name and address, and if you could please be so kind to limit your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you, and good evening, Ms. Moore.
My name's Gloria Moore, I live at 27368 Darapmouth. I'll do my meetings first. Friends of the Madison Heights area, senior citizens, is going to have another third Tuesday meeting, April 18th at 7 o'clock, at Wilkinson Middle School. Coffee and snacks are on us, everyone is welcome. Also, I was noticing that on Facebook, there's a notice that says that the -- there's going to be -- somebody's planning to put a gas station on the corner of 11 Mile and John R. And from what I had understood, at the town hall meeting, everybody won -- I got the feeling that everybody was interested in a park, and possibly with small businesses that would feed into the park to take -- and make the park more enjoyable And a gas station would not fit in there at the same time a park would be.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. If I could, the city council, in two weeks from tonight, that's April 24th at 7:30 PM, city council will consider granting or denying special approval to develop that site. And so, your comments are well received tonight, but if you'd like them to be part of the official debate of this subject, I invite you to come back in two weeks, okay?
Okay. I just don't want to repeat what happens, what happened over at Dequender and 11 Mile, where they had four gas stations and all -- there was so much competition that they strangled each other's businesses to where the businesses died. Now they've got a couple of empty lots there and--
Toxic sites even.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. A meeting still open to the public? Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gary McGilvery, Andrew Sixtanglewood, Madison Heights. I'm here for a couple of reasons. First, I want, as county commissioner, I just wanted to let everybody know that we're desperately seeking employees for the wave pool. So if you know any kids 16 and older, college students, we can use them both as lifeguards, concession workers, and things like that. And they're way behind in getting those people lined up, so much so that we may have to curtail some of the hours at the wave pool, because we don't have enough people to man the -- as lifeguards. So, if you know of anybody at all, come get in touch with -- then go to the oakgov.com, and Human Resources, and there'll be a list of positions, and what they pay, and that kind of thing, and we can apply for them. The other thing I'm here for tonight is, many years ago when I was on council, the city picked up the cost of the parade. When I say that, it was a matter of police, fire, DPS workers. And because of the budget crunch, the city had to cut back, and I can understand that and appreciate that. That's something that had to be done. But I think now that the city's doing a little bit better, I think it would be very important for the city to start picking that up. This is a Memorial Day Parade, which is to honor the veterans, the ones who have given that ultimate sacrifice during war. And I think it's important that that should be part of the city funds. If you go to outside cities, Farnborough, Royal Oak, other cities that hold parades, they don't have a parade committee that's got to raise money to pay for the police and fire and DPS workers. That's done by the community. And I see nothing wrong with tax dollars paying to honor our war heroes. I just think that's a matter that should be. I'm sure that the parade committee, of which I'm not a part of, but I'm sure that they'd be willing to continue their fundraising and be able to add the amenities. But at this point, I just think the city ought to pick it up, so I just wanted to pass it on.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to address council?
Meeting is open to the public, would anyone else like to speak?
All right, no one has asked to be recognized, so we'll continue on the agenda.
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss?
I'd like to make a motion to ask for a report from staff on a few possible funding sources for the parade. Not the entirety, but the functions that were listed by County Commissioner McGilvery.
Okay, so procedurally, should we do this as a motion to add to the agenda first? Mr. Myers, or?
No, I think a simple motion to have staff.
All right, can I ask you to restate that motion and see if there's a second?
Yes, I move that staff compile a report of possible funding sources for the staff allocations with the parade.
Your Honor, before that second, and just so I'm clear, I heard Commissioner McGilvery mention police, fire, and public services personnel, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
All right, so there's been a motion made. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
I'll second that.
All right, let me restate the motion, just so we can focus if there's any discussion. There was a motion made by Mayor Protem Bliss, and seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to have staff compile a report of possible funding sources regarding the staff allocation of parade expenses. And that was clarified to mean which departments?
Police, fire, and, Your Honor, police, fire, and Department of Public Services.
Thank you. Is there discussion from city council on this motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis?
Are we putting a timeframe on this? I mean, is that pertinent to this year, or are we looking at next year?
As I understand, you know, the parade committee makes extraordinary efforts, year to year, to keep it afloat. You know, you can think of some of their big events, like the pub crawl. Heck, even Andy McGilvery used to go to the different businesses to put a cash jar, you know, for donations. They've done so much. But the parade committee did have a special benefactor several years ago that donated a large sum of money. But that pot of money slowly dwindles year to year, it's not sustainable. And as hard as the parade committee works to be creative with projects, they just can't keep up with the cost. So at some point, the private sources of fund will dry up, or at least be to such a de minimis amount that you just can't host any of these events. And so a timeframe, probably for this parade, I don't know if there's a sense of urgency that, you know, we must act before this Memorial Day, this May, or something for future planning. Maybe we could hear from a member of the parade committee to discuss the timeframe, the urgency of this discussion.
We're looking at currently, if we can do it for this year, because our fund is dwindling quickly. We've already started discussing what possible cuts we can make to keep it alive. We're looking at, we end up spending about $9,000 a year to put the parade on. Over half of that is city expenses with police and DPS. So we're looking at this year to try and make sure that that fund, what is left from that large donation we got several years ago, we'll be able to continue it long into the future. Fundraising, we started off doing six or eight fundraisers the first year, and a lot of them just don't pan out and make enough. And we were hearing from people that we were just holding fundraiser after fundraiser, and they weren't going to go to all of them. We've looked at things like cutting, you know, the TV coverage. It's a very large expense that we can go without. The memorial service, you know, we've had to look at a lot of options, and we don't want to have to choose any of those. The whole reason we do it is because all the names are outside on those two slabs of granite, and we want to continue doing it for that reason.
Thanks, Andy. Andy, this may not be a question for you, maybe it's for staff. Exactly what do the $9,000 pay for?
It covers anything from some of the people that are in the parade, which we've eliminated a lot of that. It covers overtime for police and DPS on parade day, which that -- the police and DPS, I think last year was somewhere in the neighborhood of around $5,000. It also covers television coverage, and sound system, and everything we have to rent for the day of the event. In total, the TV coverage alone is over $1,000.
So, maybe this is a question for staff, to help me understand how overtime is recorded in the budget. I mean, if we have 100 structure fires in a year, and that requires, you know, a lot of extra police work, it's not as if we're budgeting for police overtime, or, you know, if we get a lot of emergency calls near the end of a police shift, and a lot of police officers stay over, you know, to finish the investigation, it's not as if we budget for overtime. So kind of like, help us, help me understand how charging the parade committee for overtime is part of the budget. When over, you know, other overtime, it's not that specific, it's more -- can you help just clarify this? How overtime, concept of overtime and the budget?
Your Honor, it's not budgeted per se, chargeable to the event, but it is certainly cost allocated back to the event. So when they get their charges from us, it's detailed, per employee, per day. And even the vehicle charges are itemized out per our Act 51 rental charges. So, it's specifically itemized for the event. It's not budgeted per se for parade overtime, but it is charged back on an allocation, an actual allocation basis.
Are there other examples where if city employees are called in for overtime, that we send a bill? I mean, I could, it's not a fair, I mean, maybe it's a fair analogy. If you have an ambulance run, and you have insurance, we send, you know, we send your insurance company a bill, you know, where we're billing a private entity or private person for the services we do. Can you give me just some analogies?
Special overtime in the police department, for example?
Yeah, give me some examples.
For outside employers. I mean, the other event that comes to my mind now is the City Festival, which we private roughly at the same time as the parade, but instead of charging an outside group, we're charging ourselves, so to speak, same concept.
All right. What if--
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please, Mr. Clark.
As Mr. McGilvery said, we've been cutting back, and cutting back a little more every year, and it's not going to be long. We're not going to have anybody in the parade. I mean, it gets shorter and shorter every year, and the parade committee works and works. And I think somehow or another, we could find a little money to supplement the parade committee.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I want to clarify the discussion. You know, there's one question, do we, does the city give money to the parade? And the other question is, do we not charge the parade for running the show?
On behalf of the committee, I would just ask that we're not charged, not any money being transferred to our account. But to Mr. Clark's point, we'd love to have more groups. I've got groups every day. Every day, it seems like I hear from someone that wants to be in the parade, but they want, "Give me $250, give me $500." And as we're looking at cutting, trying to keep it alive, I have to tell them, "No," and turn them away. Our committee took it from $19,000, was the last time the city paid for it, that was what the bill was. And we've cut that cost in half by doing various things and doing whatever we can.
Andy, how -- what's the biggest chunk of overtime? And I know initially it was overtime because it was a Monday holiday, and so we moved the parade, you moved the parade to Saturday. But what, I mean, what, you know, if you get a $5,000 bill for city overtime, what are some of the big chunks there? I mean, DPS has to set up barricades, police have to man the corners, like--
It's a total of about 10 employees.
And what are they doing? What are the hours, the days? Can you give me an idea?
Only on the day of the parade are we charged right now. And we pay for four DPS workers and a supervisor, and six road patrol officers, and one sergeant.
All right. And it's based on time, right? Overtime. So if it's two hours, it's a certain amount. If it's a 10-hour event, it's--
Right. I believe there's a minimum amount, but I'm not completely familiar with that.
There is a minimum for the calling, but remember, we also switched to the Saturday to save the double time, because it historically was a double-time event.
I think it was even triple time.
Double, double time and a half.
Right, right.
Mr. Mayor?
There's no, I'm sorry, Mr. Geddings. I mean, there's no question that when we're shutting down two major roads of our city, and all the side roads and businesses in between, it's very important that we do it the right way. There's a public safety issue, and so it's vitally important that our police, and our explorers, and our reservists, and our DPS are on the scene protecting our public. I mean, there's no question about that. Mr. Geddings?
I was just going to say, is there any chance, Mr. Myers, that the workers would be asked to take CTO time versus time and a half? Or, I know we can't shove that down their throats per se, but could that be a possibility?
Define CTO.
Your Honor, yes. CTO is compensatory time off, is basically earning leave time by working overtime, instead of being directly compensated. Some do, especially in the supervisory ranks, they do. But we'll be happy to provide all that data in the report to council. But I think back to Councilman Soltis's question, though, I would like to know the timeframe, so we can be responsible.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, Mrs. Scott.
Yeah, I do want to point out, remember that the fact that the parade committee decided, even though it wasn't a popular decision at the time, to change to a Saturdays, to alleviate having to pay holiday pay. That was one of the sacrifices that they made, and I think they've handled it very well. But I would, as we've been talking about, I would like to see a rundown of the police, fire, and DPS costs, if they were to donate, or not, I'm sorry, what their normal cost would be. And I think that, do you want me to do that in the form of a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I think that's in my motion.
I know, he asked for funding sources, but I was looking for the actual cost that we would be paying out.
Your Honor, I anticipated we'd purify that, as well as the funding sources, so I don't think we need a separate motion. That'll be part of the report, for sure.
I think that's implied. You know, anytime we talk about a budgetary item, where's the revenue and where are the expenditures? So, your point is well taken, that's, that will be part of it.
All right, thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
I think we've gotten creative in the past, at least in the last few years that I've been on council, when there's been a need, we've reacted. Staff has done an amazing job of finding funds and, you know, prioritizing some of these items that are important. I think that by the time that it would be necessary to bill, we could have that report finalized, and whether or not that needs another motion from council, to put that on an agenda and discuss it. But I think before any bill, and I'd be happy to amend my motion, but before any bill is sent to the parade committee, I'd like to see the report, and I'd like the chance to vote on it.
Okay, that's a fair timeline. So before we bill the parade committee, we'll see a report from city council. Maybe nothing will happen, maybe the bill will be sent, but at least a report will be published. And so the parade is coming up, we're talking May 27th, Saturday, May 27th, 2017, which is how many weeks away?
Six. About six weeks.
Six weeks. Do you, in the past, when does the committee get the bill?
It's automatically withdrawn.
Martha, someone will have to be on mic to answer that.
We don't get the bill. It automatically just--
Your Honor, that, because it's through an escrow account that's managed by the city, it's the parade committee's account, but we're the custodian, and so there's not a formal invoice, but it's just, it's just definite from--
I guess it might clarify a little bit. We aren't officially a city board, the only person official is Martha, as the project coordinator. So she handles it all, because we are, she is officially appointed by mayor and council.
All right, so, Mr. Soltis, going back to your question, did you have any satisfaction that we answered this question on the timing?
I think Mayor Protem satisfied, his answer.
Your Honor, do any do amend my motion for that?
Oh, yeah, Mrs. Scott, you seconded the motion, do you agree to that timeline?
Yes, I agree.
All right, so before funds are transferred or withdrawn--
Yes.
--there will be a report issued to city council.
Okay.
Not necessarily an agenda item, but there will be a report.
Okay.
Any other discussion from city council members? You know, I don't usually do this. Anyone else from the public want to comment on this specific issue?
Hello?
Okay. Please, Martha. Good evening, Martha. Please state your name.
Martha P. Ho, 1765 Dunlop. I want to say, we do appreciate everything that the council and the mayor has done for us. You have helped us keep the parade going by letting us help. The bus is for the pub crawl, the senior center for the spaghetti dinner. But as Andy says, first of all, one of our biggest contributors this year, they have went on a team tag. So, they notified me, I notified them in January for donations, that's when my letters go out. That's usually when they start working on the budgets. So, they notified me that the corporation now has changed the way they do it. They put the names in a hat or whatever, and then they're pulled out to who they're going to contribute to. So that's been cut in half this year. That's our biggest contributor, and I can understand it, you know, because that's what happens sometimes. But we, like I said, we do appreciate everything you do. If it wasn't necessary, we would not be before you. But we're hoping our spaghetti dinner and our pub crawl will bring us the money that will help us get through. But it's getting harder and harder every year. As you people know-- As you people know, business is not contribute like they used to. That's a thing in the past, okay? Companies are cutting back, everybody knows that, so big companies that normally sends us a check doesn't get it. But we've got the Lines Club that always contributes, the, you know, all the different clubs send us checks, but that don't cover you through, because it's hard for them to raise money too. So anything you do from, for us, we do appreciate it very much to keep the parade going. I made a, I made a commitment, I will never let the parade die. And that's, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, we'll, we'll close on that, any final comments from city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Ms. Scott.
Yeah, I just would like to thank the people that are here for the meeting and in supporting the parade. It would not have been possible to do this if these people had not stepped forward each year, and they're out there on the streets trying to raise money and promoting the parade, and it's just to thank our veterans, I mean, I shouldn't say just, because that's such an important thing, so many of them have given their lives, and their families have had to sacrifice because of their contribution. And I would like to thank the parade committee, I've been a moderator for, I can't even remember how many years, probably 25 years I've been moderating the parade, and I do this because I'm so pleased with the contributions, not only of the veterans, but all the people that are in the parade, celebrating the magnificent celebration that we have. And I want to thank the parade and all the hours that they put into this. I think they should be very appreciated and, and supported as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments from city council? All right, I'll restate the motion. Before the time, here's the motion, before the time that the city withdraws money from the parade committee's escrow account, city council moves staff to compile, to compile a report for possible parade funding sources for the city employee expenses from police, fire, and public services. This motion was made by Mayor Protam Bliss, seconded by Councilwoman Scott. Let's do a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion will say yes or aye, and all opposed would say no. Can we do a roll call?
Yep. Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Giddings?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
I vote yes, the motion carries seven to nothing. Thank you. We'll continue on the agenda tonight. Thank you, you can applause, it feels good sometimes when you, you fought city hall and you won, so step one accomplished. I do, actually, we should. Jean Linville, we can never understand what you and your family have given to this country, and it means so much that you're here tonight. For those of you at home, Jean Linville is in our audience tonight, Gold Star Mother, thank you for joining us. All right, we'll continue on the agenda tonight, we're past meeting open to the public, and so if you see on our agenda, it's kind of light, there's no communications, no reports, no items for future public hearings, no bid awards, no ordinances, nor do we have unfinished business. So may I please have a motion regarding the minutes from March 27th?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
I make the motion that the minutes of the regular council meeting of March 27th, 2017, be adopted as printed.
Thank you, sir, is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Any discussion on this item? All in favor of adopting the minutes as printed from March 27th, 2017, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. The motion carries. Okay, we'll go on to appointments to boards and commissions, are there any nominations tonight? I don't have any from the mayor's office, any, anyone else? All right, hearing none, there's no executive session tonight, so before we adjourn tonight's meeting, I invite any city council members who have closing comments, and we'll begin with Mr. Corbett.
Just a reminder that for Easter week on Friday this week, I won't be there for the office hours, but we will resume again next week. We have hours one to three at the library, anybody who wants to walk in, no appointment required, you can come in and talk about whatever issue you've got on your mind, but that'll be resuming the Friday after Easter. Happy Easter, and pass over to, to all of our friends, and that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss?
Yes, your honor, I wanted to thank the rest of council for confirming that motion, approving it seven-nothing. As, as I listened to County Commissioner McGilvery talk, it became very clear that we made an implied promise that when we take away that funding, we eventually need to find a way to give it back. And, you know, sitting on council the past few years, I mean, we have, we have found savings to accomplish very big goals, including the fence around the police station, which was a very large expenditure, much more so than the time that we're looking for here. And I, I just, I think that as this report is compiled, I'm asking staff once again to, to get creative. I, I think that creativity to find savings is really only limited to our willingness to be a little uncomfortable as we prioritize. Now, it's our job, I'm sitting on a very, very much broken chair right now, so that way we could have reallocated about $10,000 to other priorities. I'm sure that there's a number of other areas that we can look into, whether it's budgetary savings in areas, I know on the technology side, we had well over $100,000 in savings this year alone from multiple budget items that through, whether it was through the ITech review and bid process, or just the sheer volume of people bidding in the market, we were able to cut costs. And so I, I'm confident that we'll be able to find the, you know, handful of $1,000 to be able to start covering at least the staff costs of the parade, with a goal of eventually covering more, because that's the promise that we made, that's the implied promise that we made when we took away the funding temporarily during an economic downturn, that as it got better, we'd find a way to start transitioning that back, and I think now's the time. That's it, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Giddings?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor, anybody out there that might want to sign up for the fun run this Saturday, April 15th, it's going to be held at the Nature Center at 8:00 a.m., and I believe you're still allowed to sign up through the rock department. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Guchowski?
Nothing tonight, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. City Manager, Mr. Myers?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. City Clerk, Mrs. Prince?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark?
Nothing.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott?
You know I'm going to say something.
Great, thank you.
First of all, it's a wonderful day in Madison Heights, and actually everywhere, because it's Martha Kehoe's birthday today, and I want to say a special, special birthday to Martha. And to remind everybody that on November 11th, we celebrate Jean Linville's birthday. Actually, happy birthday to everybody, whatever day you were born, I'm glad you're all here. I wanted to publicize the fact that if you have a little one ages three or more, the library is going to have a special program, it's called April Showers, and it's a little storytime gathering, plus they'll be able to make a craft, and it's only $2 for residents and $3 for non-residents, but the library has a lot of wonderful programs. And if you want to register, you can do that online at thelibrary@madison-highs.org, or the phone number for the library is 248-588-7763. So, support the library program, because they do a lot. I also noticed in our informationals that there is a 24-hour pollution hotline. Now, I know it doesn't always happen in Madison Heights, but some of you visit cottages in the area in Oakland County, and if you do see anybody polluting the water by suspicious discharges or illegal dumping of pollution to storm drains, lakes, creeks, and streams, there is a 24-hour hotline that you can call and report that, and that is 248-858-0931. And I would like to have this publicized on our website, if we could, then.
Great, I do.
Yeah, Councilwoman, that's very good that you bring that up, because we have used that hotline ourselves. It is monitored by the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner's Office, they take it very seriously, and there have been occasions where we've used it ourselves, so it's a very good resource.
That's good.
And we'll be happy to publicize.
All right, thank you. Also, I noticed that the oaklandcountytimes.com, which is online, I know we have always a good reporting by the Madison Park News, but I also see there's another site, the Oakland County Times, where you can advertise events in Oakland County all over. I looked, and I went through the whole website, and there wasn't any publicity about the pub crawl, and that would have been nice to have that on there. We were one of the few cities that were not publicized with their events, so I think that's something that's free, and I would like to submit this for our website to make sure that we announce that this is available to announce calendar events, because the farther reaching, I mean, these events were all over the Oakland County, so I think we qualify, being that we're a member of Oakland County, to have our events publicized too, so that could be something that maybe ties that add to the website, and I appreciate that. And that's all, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, good report. Mr. Soltis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, all right, for the fourth year in a row, we're going to go to Lansing, it's going to be May 17th for Senior Day, this, I don't think they got it closed up last time, but we're going to meet at Senior Center at 9:30 in the morning, we take a bus trip out. First year, the bus kind of broke down, but we made sure it didn't like break down, so I can promise it's not going to break down, right? City Manager Myers, right? I was assured that, because we were stuck in that hot, that's right, special prayer before we leave. Anyway, I'll meet at the Senior Center at 9:30 in the morning, May 17th, everything's free, free lunch, tour of the Capitol, we go up to the gallery, and they announce everybody, so it's a good time. Contact the Senior Center or myself if you want to come, so more the merrier. Thank you.
Thank you. I, you know, we've had some interesting weather the last, you know, four or five weeks, you know, even the last two, three months, you think of some of the storms that we got hit with in December, and guess what, the lights stayed on in Madison Heights, and that, you know, I want to keep hitting this drum to thank city council for being so engaged with the electricity contractor over the last 12 months to keep the lights on in Madison Heights. So at some point, I think we should publish a report of our success. You know, we've got some statistics coming through on how we went from, you know, how many hundreds of power outages to zero power outages for many customers. So, you know, I'd like to, you know, have us go on the record to kind of memorialize the accomplishments we did with keeping the lights on in Madison Heights. So, I'm not asking for anything formal right now, but just, let's, let's dig in, let's look at the numbers, you know, let's see what DTE has improved in the last year, and we'll see if there's any room to grow. And who knows, maybe we've stumbled upon a model for other cities to follow on how to keep their lights on, because we're not the only city that's 60 years old in the region. So let's, let's keep up the, the good vibes and keep the lights on for another year. Is there any further business before Madison? Oh, yes, Mr. McGilvery, you?
Yeah, I forgot the special event that's happening this Friday, it's the marshmallow drop, it's at Catalpos Park, which is at 11 and a half mile in Greenfield, starts promptly at 10 o'clock. And what the marshmallow drop is, it's for all the kids to go out, helicopter flies by, drops marshmallows, you grab one, get in line, and you get a cup full of prizes and candy and whatever else. We normally have about 2,000 to 3,000 people there, we also have music available on the stage, and just lots of things going on, so parking is limited, get there early, and that's all I got.
Thank you, is there any further business before the city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'm, I'm sorry, I neglected to thank a very special person in the audience tonight, and I'll make it short, but Andy McGilvery, an example of, he's a modest person, he's sitting there trying to hide himself, but he has done so much for our city, especially our heritage rooms and the parade, I know how hard he works, and I want to thank you, Andy, for all your contributions, and I hope you're always going to be a part of Madison Heights, no matter what we do. Thank you. That's right, you can't.
This was, tonight was a unique moment in Madison Heights history for the city to personally recognize one of its residents in person. A lot of the times, we just mail these thank you cards, but to ask Andrew McGilvery to come to us, it's a small demonstration of how much we care and appreciate your work, Andy. Andy's been working for the city, I mean, since he was a young pup, with his father being on council and mayor and county commission. I remember going to high school with Andy, and, you know, he was always the genius with electronics and audio visual, and all of his work with the J.C.'s, and, you know, year after year after year, Andy always had his hand in something. And so, you know, there's a special place in Madison Heights history for you, Andy, and the door's always open to move back, we have lots of good houses and apartments to move back into, but thank you, Andy, we can't say it enough. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Is there any further business before city council? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned, good evening. Thanks, Marcia.